Let's see, welcome to a select board meeting for June 12th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And for all those who can't, please rise for the pledge. And Mr. Strout will read this.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Brittany LaRocque?
Here.
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 Okay, well, cool. Okay, public address to the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue of matter with the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, and or the company or institution you represent. Public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair designated may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. Board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. We are being in person and making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we'll not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure, participate in, please attend in person. Thank you. Anybody looking to address the board here? Okay, seeing none in the room? Oh, you can't hear me?
No, I don't know what you just said.
Oh, this was a public address to the board. If you're looking to address the board on any item on the agenda or on any other matter. Ms. Mary?
Dead Mary, for Delia at Dalton. I was hoping Zinkie would be here because I wanted to thank him for the erection of the signs, "No parking." They seem to help immensely.
Great, that's good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes. Oh, your name and address?
Okay, Maggie Walto, 5557 Delia. I'm here on behalf of myself and my mother and thank you for your time for responding to the emails and I'm curious to hear more about the walkway that's from my house down to 27 Daley Ave in regards to the curb, the sidewalk, and the property lines.
Okay, is this part of the complaint against Zinkie's or is there a separate item on either?
It was, he, Zinkie brought it up to me that it was part of that people were parking on town property.
Okay, so it's part of that licensing, okay.
So I would just like to have, the bottom line is I really would like the sidewalk. You know what I mean? Just something safe to walk my mother down the street instead of, he's trying his hardest to put out things, but still people park on the, on the supposed walkway that's town property that hasn't been distinguished if it's a sidewalk park.
Okay.
But currently it's not sightable by police, which...
When we get to the licensing issue, we can put, we can talk, we can talk further about that in more detail.
Do we need to be identified now as being cleared with the...
Um, we can put in the licensing issue, yeah.
Get out of the area.
Yeah. Okay, appointment ratifications, Mr. Oxerson.
Those who, those of you who have followed my pain to progress in assisting the planning board and zoning board's appeal will know just how happy I am to present forth for gratification the appointment of Yanko Tomasic, our, our, our new town planner-to-be.
When's the official start?
Uh, it will be June, uh, July 10th, 2023, Monday, July 10th.
All right. Hi, Yanko, how are you? Welcome.
How are you?
Welcome.
Grab a seat and just kind of screw it up a little bit to the microphones here so our friends at home can hear you through our great Dalton Community TV. Yeah.
It's like up here?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah, perfect. So let me just introduce the board for you so you know who's who. Mr. Boyle, longtime resident Dalton, Mr. Esco, Mr. Bishop, and then Mr. Strout. Couple of these guys have been long-term members, I've been on for five or so years, you've been on a couple of years, so we're the rookies, so, anyways, I'm Joe, whatever. So tell us a little bit about yourself and what interests you to Dalton?
So I have lived in Western Mass most of my life. I went to UMass School of LARP, and when I was looking for jobs, I wanted to start out in a rural community. I was originally working in Athol for my internship prior to this, and the Berkshires are not only natural beauty, people here are wonderful, my experience, and I wanted to start out my career in a rural community as I not only love rural communities as I grew up in one, but this seems like a new sort of step forward and something that I can really build on because when you start small, you can make a big impact, and this is a community that seems like things can get done, and I'd like to help things get done here, and my role is really, really here to serve you guys and to facilitate and help out as best as I can getting this community what it needs, when it needs it, and how it needs it.
Any questions from the board? Do you have any questions for us at all?
Uh, no.
All right, we're here to support you and support your success, so whatever you need to start considering certainly, and then the boys are always supportive, so...
It's Yanko, right?
Yanko, yes.
Okay.
One thing that stood out in your resume that I saw is you went to community college to start out with, didn't you?
I did.
I'm gonna give that a shout out, all right? And then G Mass, that's great.
Yeah, I have nothing but gratitude and good things to say about the mass transfer system for a community college to UMass.
It's a great program.
A great program.
Excellent, excellent. Any other questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Where are you from originally? From Western Mass?
Uh, I was born in Minnesota originally, so I spent eight years there and I've lived 20 years in Western Mass, so I consider myself, you know, I'm from Western Mass, but I spent eight years in the Midwest, so I still have some memories of that.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Yanko Tomasic as town planner effective July 10th, 2023.
Is there a second? Start your motion a second, any discussion?
Do we, do we really need to do this, seeing that town manager has offered him a contract and he's accepted?
Uh, well, I haven't, it's not a contracted position, but if you did not act within 30 days, an appointment that I made would become valid, but I very much appreciate the board's discussion and meeting candidates and their support.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Yep, any further discussion? Okay, here and now, got a motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, and welcome to Dalton.
Welcome.
So we always do a photo op, so one of our reporters here, but I'm sure they'll come here, so let's do a quick photo op.
And we'll send it to you, you can tweet it a little later.
I can dip it down.
No?
Sorry, Tom, over there.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
I'll put you in the middle. Show the guy a star or two. I'll scoot over here. How's that, Tom, you get a little smile?
It's great, just keep smiling. I'll take the few before when everybody's pointing, you know? I'll put all the ones where people are pointing together.
Thank you.
Can I put your board up and hang out or whatever you just got to go up?
Stay for a little bit, absolutely. Thank you.
Oh, that's, that's a, congratulations, Tom, that was a one journey.
Yeah, excellent.
Oh, that's for sure.
Yeah, and let's see, the next one is Chuck Gaylord as part-time temporary superintendent of Building and Grounds effective June 13th, 2023 to the appointment of permanent superintendent of Building and Grounds. Mr. Oxerson?
Yes, Chuck is currently our assistant superintendent of Buildings and Grounds, and he has agreed to work for us part-time. He works at, I believe, the Berkshire Medical Center on the night shift, and, but he has agreed to help us out part-time during this period of transition, and I think we're very lucky to have somebody who's familiar with the facility helping us out. At this time, it'll be under 20 hours a week, and, and that's fine for him, so...
Is there a motion?
Uh, before I make the motion, Mr. Chairman, this would be part-time permanent?
Uh, part-time temporary. Uh, he, he still has his...
Well, currently, part-time temporary, right?
Yes.
But appointing to part-time permanent, because permanent, I don't know, just clarify whether it's full-time, part-time in the motion or...
Yes, it's part-time and it's temporary.
Got it.
Uh, I see what you're saying there, Dan. Part-time temporary, super temporary, confused myself. Yeah, if you read the second sentence on the agenda?
Yeah.
No, not the second sentence, but the continued sentence?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll just get rid of the last.
Effective from June 13th to the appointment of a permanent...
Got it.
So he will not be...
It may not, may or may not be the same person.
So it's to the appointment date?
Well, that would be...
It's the appointment date.
That would be great. All right, I got it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Chuck Gaylord as part-time temporary superintendent of Building and Grounds effective June 13th, 2023 to the appointment date of a permanent superintendent of Building and Grounds.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
He's second.
Oh, Mr. Boyle, okay. Uh, motion a second, any discussion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Great. Is this Alicia Jost, is that how you pronounce?
Uh, yes, and she comes with the recommendation of Sue Gregory, the director of the Dalton Housing Authority. Uh, I have a letter from her here, I'll just go through it quickly if I may. Um, my name is Alicia Jost and I am a resident in town. My husband and I bought and renovated our home, moving in seven years ago with our children. I've really enjoyed becoming involved with programs and committees within our town. I feel like Dalton does an amazing job supporting our community from the young children's programs, the organized school sports, all the way up to the elderly-focused events and groups. There's such a need for subsidized housing for our elderly population as well as many families in our community, and I'm highly interested and motivated and hopeful to join Dalton Housing Authority as a board member. I work at Berkshire County Regional Housing Authority as a youth resource case manager. I specifically provide case management to young adults in our community ranging from age 18 to 25. Many of my clients are referred by DCS, and I help them navigate all the different barriers that come along with trying to find housing. I chose this age demographic to focus my work on as I have a personal interest in working with foster youth and helping to build up their life skill knowledge for future success. Through this position, I'm quite familiar with supporting individuals in all aspects of subsidized housing, ranging from applying to different housing authorities, identifying housing struggles a tenant may encounter, finding funding sources, or determining helpful community resources and referrals. And again, coming with the recommendation of Sue Gregory, I'm very pleased that we have someone interested in being on the board.
Tell us her address.
Uh, she's at On Main Street in Dalton.
Dalton, okay, good enough.
Yeah, is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Alicia Jost to the Dalton Housing Authority effective June 13th, 2023 to May 13th, 2024 town election.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Kevin, motion to open as licensing board.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, we are now opened up as a licensing board. Uh, it is 7:14. We have all parties here, we're gonna open at 7:15, but I think we have everybody here, right?
Mr. Chairman, we got this extra minute here before we start. Can I answer your question?
Right.
Since the beginning of this, the board members have had little input into this process. You basically made the decision that it wouldn't be a license board thing, it would be gathering information, et cetera, et cetera, and now here we are, a licensed board here. Exactly what are, what are we gonna be doing tonight?
Well, I think if we all read the material, what we did last meeting was to receive the complaint from the residents. Mr. Zink also provided some information, and as resident and business, I think they walked away with an understanding of the issues and clarification, but we had a formal complaint submitted to us, which we had legal review completed on, so tonight a licensing board is to basically open it up as a license board, review those complaints, and see if there's any legal violations, if there are or are not, what actions this board wants to take or not take, and then close off the licensing board. And that was a commitment to the residents and to Mr. Zink at our last meeting, so that's the purpose of the licensing hearing today.
And Mr. Zink, did you get copies of the complaint?
I did get mine.
Mr. Boyle?
I gotta make a little bit of trouble here. A lot of the things that we discussed here weren't really of illegal or non-legal issues. They were inconveniences, so when you say a complaint has to meet the level of being an illegality, I'm not sure I totally agree with that.
I'm not saying it's illegal, I'm saying we received a complaint, we had legal review.
Yeah.
And we have feedback from our attorneys, which all board members received that feedback.
Yeah.
And now it's a review of that feat, not, not the attorney-client privilege feedback, but the information we received, we can make a determination if there was or was not any violations to the license.
Violations, you used the word legal before. If there's any violations to the license, okay, got it. May not be illegal, and they may be perfectly legal, it's just a neighborhood type of thing that they would like resolved. I think we're all in agreement by that.
Well, I...
So not without getting, nobody wants to get into legalities here, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, we do because of the complaint, that were specific violations noted or recommended violations noted in the complaint, so that's why we want a legal review, and we got that feedback back from our attorneys, so this is to close that out. Anybody else think we're following an incorrect process on the board?
No.
No, any steps we missed?
No, I, I agree, I think this is a determination to see if there's any legal issues that we have to address with the liquor license, or maybe in fact what Mr. Boyle's saying, it's a neighbor issue or a zoning issue. This has, we have to determine if anything has to deal with the liquor license in any way we can enforce it.
But thank you, Mark. Yes, it could be a legal issue, it could be a neighborhood misinterpretation of issues, and it could be a part of a zoning issue, so I think we all need to keep that in mind, that's all. Thank you, Mark. Clarification, everything.
Okay, so with that, um, Ms. Mary, you had a great comment at the beginning, I guess...
I whispered it in the serious...
You did? Okay, all right. So before we go through all the review, I think to Mr. Boyle and Mr. Strout's comments as well, have the residents and the business kind of closed the gap on issues, and what are the open concerns or any, any issues that matter?
It certainly has helped when we purchased and had erected the "No parking" signs in our parking lot. That, that helped me immensely. I don't hear them, I don't see them, I'm on the other side of the building. I do know, and it hasn't been in the last few weeks, that normally people are everywhere parked and they're stopped, and good for business, but in the last few weeks, it's been uncannily quiet there. So I don't know what changed that, maybe no parking, I don't know what changed that, but at this point in time, it's quiet.
That's good news.
It should be.
Okay, anyone else? I'm, just look at the residents right now, Mr. Zink, you know?
So it's only, the only thing that's not resolved is, is the walkway outside his property line to, to, to the street. It's the only thing that's not resolved. Um, he, he's tried, he's made a lot of effort, it's just some people don't follow his effort and they just park ahead of the cones or, you know, in the driveway. Or driving down the street, and, um, it's just, that's the only thing that's outstanding, but in the first time in 42 years, it's like, we feel like it's more like residential opposed to this outburst of businesses, you know what I mean? It's, it's not just his business that was there, there was other priority since, but his business is, you know, is right, so, you know what I mean, it's just...
Mr. Chairman, can I make a recommendation to the board?
Sure.
During the project hearings, we appropriated, I think it was $10,000, which I know there's some debate whether that's enough for a sidewalk. I have driven down through there, and I understand Maggie's frustration walking her mother and stuff. It isn't marked at all, and that's not I, Mr. Zink. Take some of that $10,000 or all of it, or if we have to add to it, it doesn't need a sidewalk through there, because it really, it looks like just part of the driveway. It doesn't, that's what it looks like.
Or the curb, or the curb, you know, you can't just...
Excuse, hold on, please, hold on, please. If you want to do that, Mark, you're certainly welcome to make a motion, but I will share that I've asked through our town manager, a priority of our walkways through town and the conditions, because there were also complaints on First Street. I don't think $10,000 was enough in the budget, I voiced that concern. If we want to use the $10,000 for a specific situation, we need to be prepared to answer the others and address them with the highest level of urgency as well, because it was also a safety hazard. So I just want to bring that up.
Yeah, if I may, I think a delineation of a sidewalk, even if it's by paint...
Yes.
Would be better than kind of letting the, the people who are parking the side, or the sidewalk...
Let's take the sidewalk issue, because it's not a licensing issue, like, you know, I don't think we need a motion just to further that the highway superintendent to...
Nick's had a priority, solve that picture.
Well, Mark, I, I think maybe Mr. Dever, Dever, misinterpreted it. We're not asking to do a sidewalk on a whole street from Main Street to the end of Pleasant Street, because there already is a sidewalk. All we're looking to do is about 40, 50 feet, Billy?
Probably, Mark, yeah, probably about maybe 25 yards roughly, so obviously maybe a little more than that. I'm just estimating.
Yeah, so that's the only section we really need to do, and I would strongly follow Mark's suggestion, and I would add to it, that we, in good faith, because it's in rough shape there and meets his property line, that we do that sidewalk right there, or whatever section of it is. Of course, that's gonna interfere with your parking somewhat, because it's gonna create two entrances.
Not really, I mean, um...
Be with him and Mr. Delaney, be with him.
I mean, what I'm thinking is, well, when I got up there, there was one phone and two poles where I'm going to be acting, a string along, and a button on Amazon.com. Um, early on, I bought two cones and they got destroyed because they were pretty light of my father. I think that could be, so...
What I'm gonna suggest here is, to follow up with Mark's suggestion, and I'll even put in a motion if necessary, but add one thing to it, that when the sidewalk is there, then there'd be placed to the rear, which would be to the west of the sidewalk, a curb. You know, you could buy them cement things and set them down behind the sidewalk to keep it from being identified as part of Daley Avenue and a part of your parking. Granted, somebody with a big truck can still drive over it, but I think it'd be a lot better if we could, as the town manager said, if we could delineate that section from your property. You agree?
I don't think it's gonna affect me much at all if you guys said something like that, I can't see. A lot of that have an entrance, but they can't get in each side, it can't be like an entrance, I said because they won't be able to do it, so I have like the cars spotted in the middle. But yeah, if I have exit ways that designated, I get...
Mark, you wanna put that in the motion? Go ahead.
I'll make, um, make a motion.
I just wanted to make sure I understand, because you're talking about putting the sidewalk in, and then me having to do something with the town...
Hold on, Mr. Delaney.
Before you start spending any more town money on that, the sidewalk is there, don't need just 20, it's just under the blacktop. Anybody that, whose sight is fairly normal can walk down that and see where the blacktop is cracked and where the sidewalk goes right around the corner and down to 29. Mark, I think, I believe, mentioned the DPW, if Bud went down there with his striping equipment and painted along the edges of those cracks in the blacktop, and maybe printed "No parking" across the front of Mr. Zink's property, problem solved, money saved.
No, that is also probably, because it's winter, so painting on the ground messages is not an effective methodology of solving this issue.
How about the bulk of the year, you can, there isn't snow on the ground, and you can still read it, even if it's freezing weather, you can still read that you're not supposed to park there, and the police have...
The problem is, they...
Mr. Chairman, let me make a suggestion.
They can't find the sidewalk.
Okay.
That's been going on for years.
Okay, we need to move this along because the sidewalk's not a licensing issue of any sort of...
Exactly.
I suggest that we take up the matter of the sidewalk as a separate issue, and we try to come up with a solution that works. I don't think this is the right forum for us to brainstorm this in the public hearing.
I think with the DPW superintendent...
That's fine.
I actually disagree with you, Mr. Esco, because if we're willing to sit down here and have a conversation, and whether it's a sidewalk or whatever else it is, as opposed to inflicting punishment on a business owner or not, and having the residents not be happy, I think it's good to have this conversation and have possible outcomes right now. So I do think the conversation, if we can come to a resolution, whether it's, if we make Maggie happy with a sidewalk there so she can get her mother down, I think this is the opportunity to do that. I don't think we need to push this out or anything, I think if we can come to that conclusion right now, I mean, that, to me, that's, that's a no-brainer. I've driven over that, I've seen it, it looks like it's just part of the driveway, I think it's something we can take action on, it's gonna make Maggie happy, Mr. Zink is agreeable to it, and if we can do this, this sitting here right now, having this peaceful and everybody coming together conversation and come up with solutions, I think this is the exact, exact opportunity to come...
Do we have a motion in a second for further discussion on this topic?
I'll make a motion that we direct Bud to install a sidewalk however he deems, however he deems appropriate, because he's the expert and I'm not, and we utilize whatever funds we need to, and that $10,000, and if we need, they need to come back, and we'll come back and we'll appropriate it some more. We'll also, I agree with Mr. Dever, sorry, going on a ramble here, that we may attempt pretty soon to address the other sidewalks.
But that's not part of the motion.
Right.
Let's make the motion first and then we'll get into discussion. So what's the motion?
The motion is to direct Bud to install a sidewalk.
To install the necessary sidewalk.
Let Mr. Strout...
Install a sidewalk.
We're working together.
Thems is appropriate in that location, to, we need a sidewalk in there to alleviate the problem.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Just want to add to Mark's motion.
We, we, we got, you can amend it, we got a motion in a second. Do you want to amend it, John?
Well, we gotta approve it first, though.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, so per discussion. I don't think we should get direct on Bud to install a sidewalk without having the full list of sidewalks in this town that were listed under that $10,000. Residents were clear at a town meeting, asking that same question, and did not have a response, so we do not know what we committed to that $10,000. I hear Mr. Strout's motion, I understand it, I can sense it, so it's not intended to be, but we would have to, if we go through this process, we would have to approve every other request. So we have a budgeted number, there's some sort of list there, Mr. Oxerson, so what does this particular issue reside on that list? So, so there's a motion, a second...
Mr. Dever, amend my motion.
Yeah?
Um, amend my motion to not use the $10,000 for, have Bud, to put in the appropriate sidewalk at that location and not utilize that $10,000.
How's he gonna do that?
Yeah.
What's that?
How's he gonna do that?
It's about to budget figure out.
No, I like your first, the one, Mark, first.
Wait, 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 we're in the middle, we gotta have more discussion first.
I believe I can be part of the board's...
Well, just let me finish this one first.
Okay.
Anybody else? Dan, any other thoughts? No, okay.
There's additional money besides the $10,000 for sidewalks.
That $10,000 came from ARPA, and it was just money that, a $10,000 in addition to the $20,000 that was already in Bud's budget, making a total of 30, and it wasn't designated for any specific purpose, and personally, I can't think of a better purpose, alleviating this issue on Daley Avenue.
Bud has the resources to work on the sidewalk without getting into that $10,000, is all I'm trying to say.
Good.
So just refer the, just, let's just refer the issue to Bud. So just refer the, just, let's just refer the issue to Bud.
Yeah, let's vote on it. This is what the board wants. It's all part of this controversy on Daly Avenue. So I would, I agree with Mark, we want to vote and send a written statement that that's our vote and that's what we'd like done.
I amended my motion to say to refer to Bud to deal with it.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's just referral, motion second, any further discussion?
So that's a vote on the amendment first?
Yeah, you got to either retract your first one.
I rescinded my first one.
Okay, you rescinded the first, so now we're at the second, which is referral to Highway.
And to make it priority, I'll add to, to, sometimes to make it a priority.
So make it clear for the audience, what we're going through is a motion in order to direct our highway superintendent to taking action on that piece of sidewalk there or not. We're also talking about the budget that we approved at a town meeting for $10,000 for sidewalks, which we don't have a formal list of, so having that part of the conversation as well. So now the amendment is at a point in which we're just referring the sidewalk maintenance issue, whether they stripe it or anything else of that nature, to refer to our highway superintendent for his best opinion and to satisfy the matter. Right, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, and there's a second? No, I can't take discussion from the audience besides just answering that one question. Any other discussion?
Well, I'll just say that my intention with my comments was to not engage in a round robin of solutions in the public hearing with the audience necessarily. But certainly amongst the board, I understand the point. And I don't necessarily disagree that some action should be taken.
Okay, any further discussion?
As we're here to resolve some of these issues, and that's what we should be doing as expeditionally, expeditiously and cooperatively as we can. I think we're on the right track. I still got to offer my amendment about the sidewalk. We should vote on this first.
So the motion is to refer to our highway department superintendent for his best judgment on how to address the issue. Is that correct, Mr. Strube?
Yes.
Okay, and there's a second on that?
I did that motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, you're in on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this sidewalk that we are suggesting, and we are suggesting that Mr. Hall install, be accompanied by a curb in the back of the sidewalk to delineate the property from Mr. Zink's property.
Is there a second? Okay, motion second, any discussion? I'll just refer to my prior comments.
Well, yeah, I mean, do we want to dictate the means by which our highway superintendent will solve the problem? Are we best suited to make that decision? I don't know.
Well, this is a unique situation. It has to do with a licensing matter that we need to delineate the property because of the parking issue for Mr. Zink's property and the Daly Avenue. It's not just a standardized decrepit sidewalk just being replaced.
That's not a licensing issue, though.
Well, it is, because we're resolving these issues, that's why we're here.
But Mr. Zink's license is not, is not in non-compliance with the sidewalk-related matters, so it's not a licensing issue.
No, we don't, we don't need all these technicalities, we need to resolve problems.
All right, you have a motion, is there a second on the motion?
I second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Opposed? Those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have one or two ayes?
I voted aye.
Okay, opposed, opposed?
Opposed.
Three to two, motion fails. Any other motions? Okay, so that matter lands in the, in the hands of a highway superintendent to take action based upon what his professional opinion is. I ask, you know, I don't think we'll have an issue, but let's all leave it to him to figure it out. And then he'll come up with his recommendations and move forward. All right, on the other matter of licensing issue, I'd like to go ahead and take one complaint first, which is, let's take Ms. Mary's complaint. Everybody's had time to review that and our attorney's feedback on that. We've had some very positive feedback this evening. So if there's any, I'll just open up to the board, any questions or comments on that matter?
Yeah, I got a question from Mr. Zink. Billy, what's changed over the last few weeks?
Um, the last few weeks, it's been going on, I would say for maybe a couple of months now. There's signs that they had, there were, they had a couple of them, they were quite loved when I saw them. The tents and the people that dive into the private property on the other side of my building, that was, they couldn't really see them and when they get, they don't look up and they just park and get out of the car. Especially at night when it's kind of dark, they're not even a noticeable sign. So what I was suggesting about me purchase, I think I bought six or seven.
Six.
Six higher signs. So when you pull in, it's pretty much under eyesight. And it has tow, and if you park there, I think that's a little bit more of a scare to these people not to park there because they're going to get towed. And I think the other ones, they really, really seen it and those couples too spread out. So now these are kind of laying up if you've ever seen it, and I didn't, so. And, don't hit me later. So I think it's made a huge difference. I think it's just, it's a little bit more formal of a look. Unlike there's pro signs out there, they just scatter a little bit, people don't tend to listen to them. I think they have a little more formality lined up throughout, helpful. I also, I mean, I got, when I first opened up the new place, right, everybody wants to see the new place in town, in Berkshire County, I had people traveling from Pittfield, I've had people traveling from afar away to Adams, just to check out the place. So, which is good, obviously for business and this and that, but at the same time, for me, I really don't want a huge late-night crowd, I'm not trying to get a late-night crowd, I'm trying to pay bills. So with my trial and error, I've also reduced my hours. They're a little more flexible, even though I know I can be open a little later, I reduce those hours, trying to help ease the late-night crowds, and it's helped. I don't get a lot of far-out encounters coming in later at night that I used to when I first opened. So that's drastically reduced my numbers later at night. And by closing, you know, between 12 and 1:00, instead of 2:00 AM, that's a big difference. Usually we call, last call on the weekend around 11:20, 11:30. I give them a little flexible time for just local people, and it's not too busy, and the people, and they're fine, we stay open a little later. So the bartenders appreciate that, but ultimately, we got to dictate each day how the crowd is. And I think they managed it very well. I'm also a bouncer on the weekends, Friday and Saturday night. I think that detears away from the shenanigans that we saw earlier on when I first opened up. So I'm trying to take all the necessary steps that I have to minimize that, I don't want that. Basically, I want a good fun pub atmosphere, people enjoy it, have music every now and then, a good place to go for your family, relatives, elderly, good food, and just a fun pub, kind of like it cheers in Boston.
What other, what other actions have you taken too?
Other actions, yeah, I've also, I know there are rent that I was there now with technology and everything. I've also paid $1,000 for an ID scanner. So people come in my place and they have, hopefully a fake ID. If they have a fake ID, hopefully we can detect it. If not, it gives them another opportunity and a deterrent not to come in the place if they have a fake ID. So I put that on social media, I've kind of told my bartenders, my staff, and my bouncer, doesn't matter what the ID is, we have the unit, check it, always scan it. So they have full authority to scan every single ID that they get. And they've all loved it. I mean, I don't think that that makes in Berkshire County that have that, I haven't seen them. I've seen them in big cities in Boston and New York, but we have one now. So far, so good, had about three, three weeks, maybe, and they love it.
So you put up the parking signs.
Put up the, yep.
You have bouncers on, what'd you say, Friday and Saturdays?
Yep.
And you have that.
Bill, what are you doing for late-night parking lot issues outside?
Late-night parking, it really hasn't been too bad. Again, very nice of John Kelly and the Kelly crew over there that let me use that parking over there up against the back of the motel where the yellow side of the building is. We can fit in about eight to 10 cars there.
I mean, what are you doing to control people leaving? How are you assuring that people don't get rowdy out in your parking lot?
Well, my bouncer's right at the door.
Well, he's outside or is he?
Well, outside and inside, I mean, winter time, he's not going to be out there as much. I mean, he's at the door so he can monitor the situations, and people go in and out of my place. So when the door opens up, obviously he's observing the situation. And he's actually, when he, when he's out there, he's out there a lot on the walkway. He checks IDs a lot out there, especially if we start to get busy, because he doesn't want them even getting into the building. Because that's a little harder, we have a bouncer and you're already at their entrance. So it's a little bit more difficult to control them sometimes. So he actually goes outside once we start getting a line of people or at capacity.
Okay.
Is that the whole problem now with parking? Is that what we're saying?
Well, we're going through, we're going through the whole complaint, one thing after another, so we're just having a conversation right now. Um, I know, I, we will, we will in a minute. I will share that there's, from a licensing perspective, there are no, if the, the board has also interpreted the, the legal interpretation. Parking spaces that Zink's has, there's no violation to, to, there's no violation to the license. There's also no violation that we saw, and it'll be a zoning, it'll be a board zoning issue and not a select board issue. The zoning bylaw states three, one space for every three seats. It does not interpret, if they use all the parking spaces and park on the side of the road, that cannot be interpreted for overcapacity.
But it's also his, our street has become his parking lot.
Which there is no, which there is no parking violations, we put up, we put up the no parking sign. There's no license violation regarding parking. Parking is a.
It's not quite that, it's, I understand it's not a violation of his liquor license.
Yeah.
Okay, but there's still a parking problem, there's still a bylaw problem with that parking lot. And it's out of, it's out of compliance, and I thought you told Maggie the parking, or the zoning enforcement officer would be here tonight to explain to her.
I'm not sure where that came from.
That was a, that was an email, supposedly.
But if you have a parking, if you have a bylaw, bylaw issue, then who enforces the bylaws, Tom?
Zone enforcement.
Zone enforcement.
Which is the building inspector who is, who is stonewalling me on this.
Then if you get stonewalled by the enforcement officer, then you go to Mr. Hutchinson as the town manager. And the police will.
I went to, this, this was a year and a half ago when this all started. I went to him, then I went to Mr. Hutchinson, he told me to go to you guys.
Okay.
He didn't say a word about it.
We don't enforce the zoning bylaws.
I understand.
So if.
I understand, but you are the boss.
We're the, we're the boss of Mr. Hutchinson, we will now, I don't even know if we need to take a motion, gentlemen, but to direct Mr. Hutchinson to have the enforcement officer to review the issue.
I don't want it, I don't want it to overlap, and tonight, I know you've got a liquor license to deal with, but I don't want to see this zoning problem pushed to the side. I don't want it to disappear.
There, if tonight.
I'm not going to let it.
If tonight the select board is directing Mr. Hutchinson to have our enforcement officer review and act on your complaint. That's a select board's direction, if they're, if the select board agrees with what I'm stating here, which I'm sure they will. Then if that does not occur, you may not get the answer that you're looking for. The enforcement officer may say there is no.
I understand, but it hasn't, it hasn't been looked into, once it's looked into.
Right.
I'll, I'll.
Then we'll take, Mr. Hutchinson?
I understand the issue now and completely happy moving it forward.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
I'll be happy to work with you.
Uh, Ms. Mary.
May I interject just one thing? Think the select board or anybody take a look at the zoning board of appeals decision when Berger put the addition on and the limitation on parking in that lot? Because that's your key in the answer to all this mess.
Which, which.
At our last meeting, you told, you voted that you were going to have Brian DuVille pull that decision so that you all could see it. I know personally that it's there, but because of the abatement, I can't have access, my public information requests are dusted off. That's your answer, that decision.
Well, no public information issue should be dusted up, because.
I said to me myself that you would ask, you voted to have Brian DuVille research it.
Do you recall that, Mr. Hutchinson? I don't, I don't recall that, but maybe factually.
You have to give me a shared.
Wait, we're gonna, wait. Do you recall that, or?
Can you state that, please, I'm sorry.
It was the decision of Berger's expansion, which was before Sue Jacobs, before, um, um, King, I don't know his name, thank you, Connor. That there was a decision made by the zoning board of appeals on the limitation of parking in that parking lot. It's in the eighties. But we, and I've seen the decision myself personally, it was very limited and went with the property. But that's, it's, you guys haven't even seen it.
It's another zone.
No, I've not seen that.
I have. I remember it well.
If you called town council, they would be aware of that decision. And anybody in the zoning board of appeals.
Then not be another zoning issue, not an issue for the select board, so I think that's why I refer.
But it is an issue if it's being violated.
Not so, not so, we, we cannot take action on a violation unless there's a review by a zoning enforcement officer.
I asked Brian DuVille, Brian DuVille showed it to you, I believe.
We need an official.
We need a write-up from the enforcement officer.
From the zoning enforcement officer.
But you guys said at our last meeting.
Yeah, we did.
You took a vote.
Well, that.
You took a vote to do it, but it's not.
And if I remember correctly, the town manager said the next day he was going to meet with Brian DuVille over this issue. And evidently, that may or may not have happened.
I'm searching for the minutes.
Can you find those minutes, maybe?
Um. Oh, wait, just give me one minute.
Okay.
Mr. Hutchinson, do you know when 51 Daly Ave became a restaurant?
When?
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 When 51 Daly Ave?
1933. In fact, in 1800, it became a bar.
Okay.
We have a picture from the town, bicentennial.
That's important.
1900 chose Daly Avenue, chose Mr. Daly's bar.
So the use of that property predates the zoning laws that were implemented in the 30s.
My copy of the zoning bylaws is 1982, and Berger added to that building and made it a restaurant. Sometime, they are in the mid-eighties. That's why any.
Add to the exception.
Okay, well, my point being.
I would like to take, so we can move this along, because we don't have a licensing issue in front of us on this particular item. I would like to take, make a motion that, I would like to make a motion that we refer this to our zoning officer for review and enforcement, and Mr. Hutchinson will follow up with this board by the next select board meeting with the outcome.
Second.
Is there a motion second, any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle.
Dan, I think you're, you're totally off-base, inaccurate with that statement that you said. It predates zoning. Zoning came to town basically in 1950. That bar has been there since 1933, from the Daly family, I believe it was Pete Daly.
There's actually, there's.
No, not that one, that's what I'm saying.
Keep going.
I, in the eighties, the owner at that time, Mr. Berger, applied for an addition to the building. And when they had the zoning board of appeals, he had to get a special permit. One of the stipulations to his being granted that addition was that, two things. He abandoned the car lot, he had a used car lot there. On the south side of the property, he had a used car lot, five, six, seven cars. And there was an automotive repair shop in the barn or outbuilding, whatever you want to call it. And it was part of the conditions that that building not be used for commercial use and only be used for personal storage. And that's in the records. So it, because this action was taken in the eighties, it definitely, a zoning board, zoning law, bylaw applies.
Mr. Chairman.
You just told totally, zoning bylaw, waiting for somebody to permit.
It wasn't a zoning bylaw, it was a ruling of the zoning board of appeals at the time for the special permit. It's not a bylaw, it's a condition.
No, but you said it didn't exist because the bar was there predating.
I didn't say that, I didn't say nothing didn't exist. I said that the use of that structure as a bar, restaurant was later, is my understanding, predates the implementation of zoning bylaws, the passing of zoning bylaws. So these parking restrictions that are cited may not necessarily apply, and the licensee could certainly make that argument in land court.
So here is the, let, no comments from the audience, please.
I want to be careful here, you know, what we're looking at. And that's why I think directing the zoning enforcement officer to look at this, which was not done previously.
What I'm talking about.
Wait, comments from the audience, please stop. We're in board discussion. Mr. Boyle.
Yeah, what I'm talking about, in 1980, action by the zoning board of appeals under offices of the general zoning bylaw, granted an addition with circumsta, or conditions. That's what Leo was talking about. And he said it was mentioned before and the board didn't pay any attention to it.
Okay, um, we have a motion and a second. We're going to refer this to the zoning officer through Mr. Hutchinson with a response null later than that next board meeting. We have a second, any further discussion? You're in on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries? Okay, any further items in the licensing issue from the select board that need to be addressed? I summarize that the issue about the over, underage drinking, we have absolutely no evidence. We have no police complaints to that matter to the board to take any action there too. So that's not a violation. I did, for the board, I did speak with our chief police. I asked her if there were any violations or things that they saw of concern that it would be. that it would be raised to a level of select board and she assured me it would be because this would be a violation of law or some bylaws. She has not seen that case at all, and she also shared that every time there is a concern of some level, she talks to Mr. Zink and he addresses it immediately. So, but no, there's no evidence.
Stand you back here.
There's no, there's no evidence of underage drinking at, at Zinke's pub. There's no, um, violations reported by our police department to this board of any licensing concerns around underage drinking. So that matter is therefore closed, there's no violation that this board can take action on. And that's from our town attorney. No, we already have the complaints, we have them reviewed, uh, any other issues in the licensing matter?
Can I speak up about what Mr. Zink said about his signs and everything?
No, there's not a licensing issue, there is zoning issue. Right, right now I'm trying to get through the complaint.
Well, he, he got to, um, answer Mr. Scott's.
Because it was a specific question from a.
About, and come off as a big hero here, that he, he didn't even, he didn't even follow up on his last, um, this last meeting. It's in the record that he said he was gonna give them, that he had or had given them six signs for the apartment building. He, nobody in that apartment building, including that, and including the owner of the building, ever got an offer from him, six signs, or any signs.
There are new signs posted on that.
There are new signs there.
There are new signs posted, that's not an issue for this board to take up further this evening.
Do you think he might have felt a little pressure after the first meeting? I think that, that's what I'd like to see from the board tonight. Its consequences.
There are no consequences.
Not making this so easy.
There are no consequences.
Way out of it.
Mr. Delaney?
Awful lot's gone up, water's gone over the.
Mr. Delaney, there are no.
In my, in our neighborhood.
The board has not, is not taken final, final decision on any consequences whatsoever at the moment. As of now, there are none. There are deferrals that you can take to the zoning board of appeals, to our enforcement officer, we have directed our town manager to take action on that and have a response back here by the next meeting. That's the next step on zoning, zoning is not a select board issue. Number two, we took up this issue because we want to see if our residents and our business owners could collaborate between now and, between the last time we met and tonight. And there is a lot of action that has been taken on behalf of the business owner. Signs have been installed, investments have been made in additional FTE and technology to scan IDs. We, as a board, are looking for our residents and our business owners to collaborate together to solve issues. If we need to go to zoning, zoning enforcement and you don't like the response, you can take that zoning enforcement and challenge it legally. But we're not gonna, we are not the board.
Talking about what goes on there right now.
Then, we have your complaint, we have Ms. Mary's complaint, we've had that reviewed by KP Law, and we're making decisions based upon our lawyer's interpretation and our lawyer's guidance. That's what this licensing board is to do. There is nothing that I can see in this license, in the complaints, or any of the police reports, or anything that's been submitted to this board that causes for us to take any action on the license. But I'm gonna defer to my select board colleagues to see if they interpret things differently. So that's where we are at this moment. Board members?
I've read the complaints and as far as liquor license complaints, I totally agree that some, majority of this is zoning board and needs to be addressed. As far as liquor license issues, the accusations, I don't think have been substantiated. The, uh, the, uh, over serving, there's no police reports that I've been made aware of that substantiates that.
We need hard evidence of that to take action on that matter, it, it cannot be hearsay. It can't be that, it needs to be a hard police report. Um, that's just the case with that. Patrons parking across the street, you know, it's difficult for a licensee to be responsible for what happens off of their property, even if the accusation is that someone who is, you know, patronizing the establishment is parking there, it's diff, they can't enforce parking on private property either.
We have addressed.
That's a cha, that's a challenge, that's a big, big challenge.
I'm not taking any more comments at the moment.
Um, parking on the street, there's been multitude of no parking signs now, or at least in various areas installed. You know, are you asking for no parking in the street at all, is that what you're asking for, Mr. Delaney?
I want him to run his business according to the law, within the law. I do believe this quietness of his business that he's bragging about is because he knows that after the last meeting that you, as a board, as the licensing authority, can do something, there are consequences. So all of a sudden, it came like a moor over there. People, for the last two weeks, I don't, I don't know when you informed him about tonight's meeting, but it seems like the bottom dropped out of the crowd for the last two weeks over there.
Mr. Delaney, I can say for certain, I can say for.
I, I can't trust that that's gonna keep on.
Well, your lack of trust, excuse me, we're gonna, we're gonna stop, Mr. Delaney, we need to stop the conversation now. Mr. Delaney?
I'm just like you guys want.
Mr. Delaney, I'm gonna call you out of order, please stop. Your desire for us to cause action against a business owner without any law violations come to this board through evaluation is not going to happen. There are pathways, this board, because we are very pro resident and business in this town, took it upon ourselves. As the chair, I received your complaint, I could have easily kicked that over to the zoning law, zoning board, and said, tell me when you have something about this. We listened to the residents, we listened to the business owner, you all collaborated nicely over the last couple of weeks. There are now signs that Mr. Zink and Mr. Zink have put up as far as the resident, no parking. I wonder if your landlord has taken action to cause, have a tow and contract to tow cars, because that's.
He does.
Then that's great, we close the loop.
That's why.
We close the loop on that issue. So the other issues are no violations, we have the sidewalk safety issue, which we heard, and we've taken action to defer that to Bud, who's very, very responsive to matters, and that's a good thing. So this board has taken action to close the loop and have these issues resolved, because there is no violation of a licensing issue. There's questions about parking, we've got a zoning history. The interpretation right now is that based upon the zoning that we have for Mr. Zink's business, it's one spaced every three seats and that is in compliance. He has, he has put an FTE at the front door to manage the head count, which is another action. He's invested in the ID scanner, if you're not, if you're not familiar with this ID scanner, it's a national program, it's well-used in every major city, it costs about a thousand dollars, it will catch ID, fake IDs from every state in this country. To make that investment in the small business is significant, so if I was a resident, I would just suggest, I think we have a business owner who's tricking over shoelaces to try to resolve these issues as best as possible. So there, we're just gonna, there's no licensing, if there's no licensing matters to address, I would entertain a motion to close the licensing here. Is there a second?
Am I to assume now that what has happened over the past two weeks is going to continue? That you'll close it at eleven o'clock, there won't be bands playing till one o'clock in the morning?
There's no bands playing till one o'clock in the morning, if there is, you call the police department.
I'm sorry, what?
I had already talked to you.
I will give you a second.
There's no motion on the floor, it's second.
I'm missing something here.
We have a motion on the floor.
And second.
And second, any further discussion from the board?
I will mention, there's two actions, three actions that could be taken. One is no action, closes licensing board, we've heard the complaints, we've directed, uh, various activities at the town. Two, uh, we could reduce hours as a consequence, and three, as a licensing board, you can revoke a license. But we're not considering those steps at this time. Uh, it's just the, the level of the complaints do not rise to that sense of urgency, particularly the fact that there's no actual liquor license violation. That I find in my mind is a finding, um, that's probably the most important one to come away with tonight. When hearing the steps that the licensee has taken to address some of the complaints that aren't necessarily license-related, liquor license-related, uh, but are, you know, important to the quality of the neighborhood, I, I, I believe that, um, these actions should hopefully help improve the quality of the neighborhood. Certainly, what's that?
You wanna move in, I'll sell my house.
It's a great market to sell.
I'm just.
There, there is, do me a favor, do, do me a favor, go, go into Zink's or any establishment, their license is hanging on the wall, their entertainment license, their jukebox license that has the hours of operation. If you as a resident see any hour of operation after that, file a complaint with a zoning enforcement officer and they'll take action. Okay?
And the, the police department also enforces zoning laws too, by the way. It's not just the zoning enforcement officer.
Um, alright, so we have a motion, second on the floor, further discussion from the board? And the motion is no action and close? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, and thank you all for colla, colla, I'm sorry, Mr. Zink wanted to.
That's what he needs, I got it in a couple of words. I don't understand, this first thing was, I'm speaking from my heart, this bar has been open for, I don't know how many decades. I've done my thing, I've been a hero, as much as I possibly do to help this situation. I can't guarantee next week we don't have a big crowd, right? It could be a holiday, people wanna get out, so no, I can't guarantee that. But I found everything with what I can, within the law, the people tell me what I have to do. I have bands, I don't have them till one AM, they shut down at eleven PM, okay? During the weekends, it's two to five, and they may play a little more, but I can't, they can play all, you know. I am, it really frustrates me when I do something, and I guess I didn't do it quick enough. So I try to help out, you know, that I've been in private property over there, I guess I didn't do it quick enough, 'cause I felt the pressure. That's basically what you said. That's, I have been trying to work with all our neighbors from day one. I've tried to address everything I can, I mean, I'm still running the business, I gotta be profitable, I gotta pay my bills, I can't shut down at ten PM and, and make money, I can't, but I, I'm losing money by other decisions I have made. Neighborhood is better, and I'm losing money.
Who cares? Mr. Delaney, you're out of order, sir, please calm down.
Obviously, some type of person have been out against me, I have no idea why.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move forward with the agenda.
Okay, Bill, we heard you, yep.
Okay, thank you, I think you heard it.
Alright, motion is second to close the licensing board, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, and thank you all, I know it's not easy, but thank you. Okay, um. Physically, year twenty-four appointment applications effective July first, two thousand twenty-three, Mr. Hutchinson.
Uh, as you know, every year we, uh, reappoint people to various kinds of positions. Uh, my executive assistant sends out notices to people and says, please let us know if you wanna be reappointed, if she doesn't care back, then she follows up, she's done an awful lot of that, and the result is the lists that you see in front of you.
Okay, is there a motion?
We may, we may be back to clean it up in two weeks, but, um, right now, this is all we have.
Okay. Uh, town, wait a minute, town council, Copeland, Copeland and Page?
Uh, in the past, we have, um, appointed a town council.
Isn't that KP Law?
Yes.
Oh, the same company.
Oh, right, sorry.
Let's spell that.
We, we didn't update the name.
Oh, okay, alright, okay, alright. Alright, uh, is there a motion?
Um, before I make the motion, are we doing this all three or one at a time here?
Uh, we'll do the staff appointments for attachment.
By themselves, so just do three motions?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint, uh, staff members to the various positions, uh, for a one-year term through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as presented by the town manager.
Is there a second? Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Staff positions, attachment B, it's the FY twenty-four stipend appointment applications.
And, uh, Copeland and Page is KP, right?
Yes.
Okay, got it, alright, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we appoint, um, the following, uh, stipend, uh, positions for a one-year term, uh, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as presented by the town manager.
Is there a second? Motion is second, all, or any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, and attachment C for a volunteer appointment application.
Mr. Chairman, I move, uh, that we appoint the volunteer, uh, positions as presented, uh, for varying terms, um, on the sheet from the town manager.
Motion is there a second? Is there a second?
Uh, ask for a question, quick question, are we, we're doing this page right here, Dan? Why is my name on you twice, it ultimately tells you.
Well, you have a couple of different positions.
No, I don't.
Alternate to the North Berkshire Solid Waste Management District, which we did last meeting, and then you have the BRTA Advisory Board.
Yeah, I didn't even know I had, uh.
You know, alternate to the Regional Planning Commission.
Uh, okay.
You're buzzing now, sir. Let's speak up now before we need to do the appointments, right?
Just one further question, who, who's the, is the chairman of the planning board as the, uh, first delegate to the, uh, Berkshire Regional Planning Commission?
Uh, looks like I was appointed previously and will be appointed again.
So it's somebody from the planning board?
Uh, no, this would be, as in my role as select board member, someone from the select board, someone from the planning board gets appointed.
Uh, I guess, well, forget it.
Forget what?
I thought the chairman of the planning board was a delegate to the regional school district, a regional, uh, planning commission. And I was alternate to that.
Ah, so it's possible this is incorrect then.
Who's chairman now, oh, uh, what's his name, uh?
Mr. Perrinick.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way it used to be, by, by, uh, nature of his, uh, occupancy as a chairmanship, he was automatically the delegate.
Right, and that's an elected position, so that's why it's not mentioned here. Uh, but we should have him as the delegate to the, uh, VRPC, we'll work on that for, uh, next time.
Sure.
Was there a second on there?
Second, yep, all in favor?
Discussion.
I got, uh, we're at discussion, actually, I got one question. Uh, Mr. Hutchinson, Pat Pett is listed as emergency management advisory council.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Okay, so it might transition to open, I guess.
I think we did this, um, when she put that part in motion before he actually.
Yeah, no, no worries, just, just a quick check, that's all. Alright, with that, uh, with that edit?
I want one more edit, unfortunately, Mr. Donald Harris passed away.
Really?
Recently, uh, several days ago.
That was?
Yep.
Okay.
No.
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah, that is very unfortunate.
So we all done with it, we voted in?
We can vote now, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Vacation payouts carryovers, Mr. Hutchinson?
Also, at the end of the year, we traditionally, uh, if, uh, if employees have additional paid time off, especially, uh, well, specifically vacation, um, they can request with me up to two weeks off, anything. Over that has to go to the select board for approval. Again, we had a number of employees put in extra hours instead of taking their vacation, and, uh, all of these have carried over, um, the appropriate amount of vacation with me already. So this is in addition to, uh, carrying over whatever vacation, uh, they can with me, I believe that's, uh, two weeks for everyone.
Do you agree with all these requests?
I certainly, uh, don't have a problem with, uh, compensating people for what they have earned, which is what they have done there.
Okay, this, um. Okay, this um. Well, two things, well, two things I would like to see, I think this type of request, the memo should be addressed from my Town Manager, not our executive assistant. That a Town Manager is submitting this. For approval.
Ah, okay.
By the select board. Because my question to you is, do you agree with all these requests for carryover and payout?
Um, yes, I, I don't have any um.
So we need to hear. Okay, that's all.
Okay.
Because, because they have earned them, I, I would. Obviously also recommend to everyone that they take the time off that they're owed. But the current personnel policy allows this and I don't see any uh, reason not to.
Any bu- any budget impact or is this all covered in, this is a, this current physical year payout, right?
Some people have carried over time from year to year, but I uh. I think you, you always use up the time you carry over first. Uh, is my impression, I have to check with Don on that.
Okay. Well, what happens if the select board were to deny these requests? What happens to the hours they're requesting to carry over, they just disappear?
Yes.
It'd be helpful for a request like this just to have the policy to refer to. I mean, I can do my homework and look it up, but it'd be nice to just have it with the request.
There is a.
Always be easier, yeah, just be uh, simpler to, to review the policy along with the requests. I don't have a problem with it, as long as there's no adverse budget impact.
When do you need to have the approval by Tom Puss?
Uh, the end, uh, well, um, I'm sure Don would rather have it sooner than later, but I think the last payroll for FY twenty-three would be.
I'll approve it under one condition, if the memo changes and we, we see, we see the new memo next meeting, but we'll. Approve, you know, motion to approve based upon the change, you know, with the edit of the memo, the two from being from our Town Manager. With the same detail. But approve the request of our employees to be subject to process.
I think what you suggested, is your name to hear relatively is, is his name, that's all. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a motion, Joe?
That's a motion.
Okay, say it.
Motion second, any discussion?
Yeah, one quick, one, yeah, one quick question. Mr. Bazella. Now, you shouldn't be getting your information by the Berkshire Eagle or by rumor when you're a select board member, but sometimes that's the only way you get it.
I don't, we want to go into any kind of personnel issues here, he's entitled to that, to what he's asking for and where.
I'm not asking about that, I just asked you, is he still on suspension?
We're not talking about personnel issues, that's not a public issue. Any other discussion, we have a motion a second on the uh, payouts and carryovers?
One comment I would make is, I echo the Town Manager's uh, comment. Got to encourage, more than encourage, you can't quite mandate, but um. Employees, I know they're busy and maybe they didn't have the opportunity to take time off and that's a whole nother issue, but. Can we avoid these carryovers because they're just going to continue to accumulate if they don't take their time? And we'll just keep having these issues and then they'll ask for a big payout of carryover hours, which they've earned, I get it, but. You know, we certainly don't want to keep this as a perpetual cycle.
I would agree.
Well, I, I do want to revamp the personnel policies in a kind of a major way anyway, and this is um. This is one that seems a little unusual to me. I, I agree that people should be taking time off and would not mind amending that in a new personnel policy.
Okay.
But certainly, I, I at least I think we need to know um. The trends in more detail, so for example, um, I'll just pick the biggest out of the bunch is, is the chief. You know, um. If I was to look at this memo, two years from now, I have no idea why we approved that chara- that payout. There's no detail in the memo, there's little detail in any one of these memos. So part of me wants to reject it because of lack of detail for the record, but I understand the process. And so to Dan's point, I think we need to have that monitored throughout and certainly much more detail on the why. Because then with the detail of the why, then we can help inform direct. Policy. I have no idea why, you know, one of our employees um. Total hours to carry is ninety point five. There's no information. So I think from a process perspective, we're going to require, I'm going to um. I think there's a motion a second, I'm actually going to go against my own motion because I'm just recognizing that there's no detail. Now, when's the last payroll of the cycle, can we get that, when's our next meeting?
Yeah, next meeting will be fine.
Okay, so if we get the detail, I mean, let's go with the motion that I had on the table.
You did, but you know.
I'd like to rescind my motion, sorry.
So, so this is the process that's been used in the past.
I know, I know.
And so what, we, we, we just continued that process for now, um.
Yeah, but there's no deep, there's no deep, maybe I missed it last time, I don't know, but there's no detail.
Well, the last time, I think for the last couple of years, there were a lot of payouts because of COVID.
Right, I agree with that.
Right, and uh, I think, you know, so, so that was, that was pretty clear that people just weren't going anywhere.
For example, did our chief um, fill in a lot of shifts to minimize overtime? So, you know, was there a decrease in overtime budget, but she has been, I don't know, there's no detail, so.
Joe, do we approve this tentatively, subject to details being provided by the Town Manager at the.
You can certainly make that motion, I.
I, that is the motion, we approve this tentatively, subject to the Town Manager, manager providing a detailed explanation. For some of these larger numbers that occur in the payout schedule.
Is there a second?
I have a second, Mark. Some of these larger isn't, uh, it's pretty vague.
It is vague deliberately, I'll leave that at your discretion.
Okay, I, I, I think I, I asked for it from everybody or.
Okay, asked for it by everybody, bye.
Okay, is motion second to temporarily approve this with uh, more detail to come? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm opposed.
I'm staying.
Okay, so it's three to one, three to one to one.
Okay. We'll get some more detail, again, I don't think it's unreasonable.
Yeah, because.
We're gonna, yeah.
Maybe this is why Don has to uh, has so many hours as you may, because of the, the pressure of the workload.
I just think we have very um, we have very engaged local media between I Berkshires and Berkshire Eagles. If either one takes this, they have absolutely no idea what the heck we just.
Did the motion pass or not?
It passed three to one to one.
Okay.
With Mark of standing.
Yeah, I, you know, for, for my purposes, I think it would be fairer to the staff to implement that for next year and to come up with a, with the new form rather than.
The form says additional notes and there's nothing there. Right?
Yeah, well.
Right, moving on.
Yep, yep, the message is, is clear. Um, transfers between departments.
There is just one at this point, and that is uh, from my salaries to my expenses, we had an unusually um, large. Amount of supplements for our law books, we got a whole box of them, probably fifty of them. Um, and each one we insert into the copies of the Mass General Laws that we keep for reference. It is a question whether it's worth keeping all those books, I think. I have consulted them, they're good because they include case law, which allows some. You know, minimal kind of uh, thinking about. How a particular situation might apply, which can save me some time if I'm writing Town Council. It's a lot easier if I can write them and say, you know, based on what I understand, this is the case, do you concur? Can get a quicker answer than, you know, please fill me in on everything regarding that. That said, I ha- I do have a question as to whether it's worth keeping up the subscription. We have a bunch of hard copies. Uh, well, the, the thing that it provides that, you know, Mass General Laws Online doesn't is the case law. So it, it provides commentary on how some of these laws have been interpreted. Again, it's, it's, it's expensive to maintain, one of the problems is that having, you know, having invested in something expensive. The minute you don't keep it up and it becomes obsolete, it's obsolete. So I can go either way on it, uh, you know, for the future. But for now, we, we, we do still have our subscription and that's what the uh, that's what the money's for, is this. Box full of amendments, we usually get them two or three at a time and we got a large box of amendments this time. Guess there were a lot of amendments.
Do they offer this online?
I imagine the subscription would be similar.
Let's look.
In the uh, Town Manager's salary account, where this is coming from? There will be enough left over to cover salary for the rest of the year after?
Uh, that's what's saying.
That's the agenda item, right?
I thought they were talking about something else, eighty-five dollars per month.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Eighty-five dollars per month.
That certainly sounds better to me for, for the Massachusetts laws.
It says state primary.
Yeah, it was uh, again, a kind of a remnant that I took over that I, I have questioned myself, so.
Okay, yeah, it seems like you're talking this out of.
Yeah, I'm happy to look into it before.
I'd say look at the online version, see if that covers what you need.
And then maybe resubmit the transfer request with a different amount or?
No, we still, this is a bill that we hit.
Okay, it's a bill that needs to be paid, okay, got it.
Going forward in FY twenty-four.
Fair enough, so, okay.
So was it in the budget?
This is exceeding what was in the budget for the LexisNexis subscription.
Oh, okay, okay, so I'm just going to make a motion if that's okay.
Okay, it's a budget transfer.
Okay. It's on a new. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Town Manager's request for a transfer of one thousand six hundred and seven dollars. From the number one, two, three Town Manager salaries to the number one, two, three Town Manager expenses. In accordance with chapter seventy-seven of the Acts two thousand and six of Mass General Laws.
May I just, just clarifying, transfer in department one, two, three, five, seven, nine, nine to five, seven, nine, eight.
Yeah, thank you, it wasn't in the top here.
Okay, alright, so there's a um, oh, yeah, you're right. Um, okay, so is a motion second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Uh, job description for superintendent buildings and grounds, for the last meeting, we talked about this briefly and asked everybody to prepare a review of. Uh, building ground superintendent, uh, job description to see if it covers everything that we as a board are um, thinking about when it comes to this particular position. And uh, so open up the discussion. I have, I have one, I don't see in this job description where um. The, if we look at the essential functions, just look at the first paragraph, responsible for maintenance and repair of all town hall and other facilities as well as related grounds. Facilities include town hall, police station, library, council agent, town park, restrooms and grandstands and two parks, as well as town owned. House, um, and then perform special maintenance assignments. Don't know where they're getting the assignments from, but they should be the leader of the maintenance. And it's also missing, um, has maintained coilers, scheduled repairs and maintenance work. What I don't see is uh, in the specific essential functions to look at our overall facility strategy for space. And for energy savings and for getting ahead of our boiler issues because the boiler is old and doing transition to. Heat pumps, or we'll do something different, collaboration with green committees, et cetera, so those are the things I saw missing.
I'd just like to point out that in Joe just said, in his listing of related grounds, facilities include town hall, police station, library. Council on Agent, I think they should say senior center instead of council on agent.
Yeah.
And, and then the other part is of the special requirements, Massachusetts Construction Supervisor License desirable. And Massachusetts Certified Public Procurement Official Designation desirable. Those desires um, tell me that we're underpriced at twenty-six fourteen an hour. And we may not get candidates that have those desirable um, skill sets.
Yeah, that's true, and I, I wouldn't um, expect somebody coming in from the private sector to have the procurement um, designation anyway. Uh, but, but a, a lot of people do, because if they do work with public entities, then they get at least partly certified. Uh, they take one of the three required courses to do that.
Uh, if somebody signs on, is it hard to get that designation? You just mentioned they have to take some courses?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a series of three, three-day courses with tests.
What, what, what I, with those additions, if the board was to agree with those additions, what I would then suggest is I think we're underfunding the, the position at twenty-six fourteen an hour. I don't think you get the right. Right candidates at that rate, so that's, that's the reason why I brought this up before, so I'm assuming they had time for value, just put their own thoughts to it.
I, I, I think there are some, some other items that, that probably should be changed as well with the, I think um, the DPW generally takes care of the grandstands and the parks. That's what I understand from Bud and.
The DPW takes care of that.
It's worth, worth going over this in, in a little more detail, but um, we can. I, I can come up with some options.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah.
So this, what, what is presented is just the one as, as it is currently, you've done, done no, no editing prior to presentation to us?
Right.
Okay.
Uh, this is what, what, what came up after the um, the personnel study. Consultant interviewed Pat.
I see.
And, and there were, and then there, there was negotiation with, with me too, so I, I looked over it.
And I said, I submitted. I said, I sent suggestions to you about this job description over a year ago too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is where, so what I.
And that was, you know, for the purpose of building the position up and I'm still not convinced that we need to do that.
So.
But it's.
Who, 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 based upon this job description, who's responsible for overall strategic planning of facilities, management and. Cost savings and up boilers and the, the current condition and space and all that stuff, who, who will be our department head responsible for that?
Um, typically that falls on the administrator or manager. And that's one of the reasons I was keen to get a space study done.
So.
And that's why I.
So that would fall, that would fall under your, on, on your lap?
Yeah. Because, yeah. And that, and again, that's why I pushed for the space study. Because that was part of my thinking of, we need more information about our, our structures and potentials going forward. Together with the discussion with the board about, you know. Capacity and, and related issues like that. That's how I approached it.
I'm going to make a motion that I um, not to accept the job description as presented. But have the Town Manager review and come back with a revision. So a second on that?
Well, it is the current job description that we have advertised for positions, so rather than not accepting it, how about a motion to revise it with options?
Okay, a motion to pause recruitment and revise the job description.
We have two interviews tomorrow.
I don't think this job description, well, here's, here's where, here's where my, my head is blurred, I don't think this job description clearly defines the role and activity and central functions of the responsibility that we need for the town delta. If the board agrees or disagrees, that's absolutely fine, they may not, but I'm, I'm voicing my concern that at twenty-six fourteen, we're not going to find a leader. we're not gonna find a leader to guide our facilities to the next thing that we need.
And you see that as one of the functions of this position?
That's what I see, yeah. Because I think you have too much on your plate. I don't think it should be the town manager's responsibility. I think it should, the town manager setting the strategy and letting this particular person go do the legwork and gather all that information.
Well, and again, that's why I moved the space study because that's my approach to getting that kind of information compiled and presented.
Is there a second on my motion, or no?
Which is the motion again, no?
The motion is to pause recruitment and revise this current job description.
I think that's unfair to tell me.
Well, I'm waiting for a second, Mr. Board. If it doesn't sound in the motion, then the motion dies.
We could second for the sake of discussion.
Okay.
We've got two interviews tomorrow. I don't think we should cancel them.
I agree.
Do the candidates meet the stuff I'm talking about? Or are they lower qualified candidates? I guess I'm gonna rephrase. Do they meet the job description of today or the revised job description of tomorrow?
Well, we don't have to revise jobs.
Well, you know what topics I'm talking about, though.
For tomorrow, but they could cert, you know, based on what was advertised.
No, I'm asking a specific question, Tom. Do they meet the qualifications of the current job description? Or can they meet the qualifications if you were to adopt what I'm suggesting? And I'm not saying you have to, because the board has not voiced any opinion on this yet. If you were to take those recommendations and revise the job description, would these candidates fit that bill?
I'd have to review the...
We can have it tomorrow.
I'd have to have them.
Hey, here's the thing. I think Tom knows what we're looking for, Joe.
I think we should let him go tomorrow with these two interviews. He didn't work. We need to get this position filled.
And I see Joe's point. We don't wanna hire somebody who's not gonna be...
Joe, they don't fill a critical job because you're forcing a job description candidate through the pipe. That's why we wanted to bring it here to the board. You guys have not commented on this. So, I believe that you guys are not seeing the same issue lying in, which is absolutely fine. No, you just move forward.
Well, see what you're saying.
We understand what you're saying.
So, let's take a vote on the motion.
I don't think it rises to the level of seriousness or priority at the moment. I believe it should be addressed, but I don't think it's up.
So, but once you hire somebody, now you're stuck there.
But he doesn't have to hire anybody tomorrow. All he has to do is interview them and see if they are potentially capable of undertaking the job as you have described or recommendations have described. How do you get a feeling for that? He's a professional.
Feedback from the board, do you guys agree or disagree with what I'm seeing? If you disagree, say it, and that's okay. Because this is not a one-man select board. I'm raising a concern I see coming at us in the next twelve months.
I'm against it because I don't wanna see you cancel these two things tomorrow.
Okay, so you wanna see a, you wanna see a position that meets the job descriptions that's presented today?
Well, I think there's wiggle room in here. No. I agree with you, Joe, but I think we gotta be a little flexible here. Why cancel two perfectly good interviews tomorrow?
I'm not saying cancel them. Go through the interview process, but keep in the back of your mind, do they meet those new requirements?
No, I thought you said cancel. I thought you said cancel. You said pause.
Oh, yeah, pause, yeah, pause.
So, I feel that we go through with the interviews based with Tom knowing what we're looking for, what you're looking for, Joe, which I agree with you. I agree with you wholeheartedly. But I think Tom goes through the interviews based on the information that he's heard tonight, and we do need to revise.
And bring back the revised job description?
Right.
Before making an offer.
Because here's the thing.
Right.
Yes, he gets a motion, Joe.
The two interviews tomorrow may not even qualify for the job description that we had before.
Sure, hope they do.
Right, I hope they do, but...
Not sure why you interview if they're not qualified.
And based on the research that I have done so far about this, looking at other towns and things since we've spoken before, I don't think we'll, I think we could get somebody for not as much as we might have been thinking of before. Somewhere in the mid-sixties, I think. We might be able to get somebody more like what you're looking for.
Well, I won't...
We have to change the classification.
I'm not hearing the support, I'm not hearing board support on the additions. I'm gonna retract my motion.
Well, we can vote on it.
No, Joe, I think we do support him. But we'd just like to see him have the interviews tomorrow and see if we can, if any of these two guys tomorrow we can work with and work into what you're suggesting as a revision of the job description.
And if we want to expand the position, we can always do that and encourage the current, you know, employee to apply when it's, you know, when it's fully thought through and we know what...
I'll just summarize. I don't wanna see a candidate that's entry-level knowledge and skill set. Entry-level.
I agree with you.
I don't wanna see an entry-level candidate. I wanna see somebody that has skills that are far superior than what this job description says. Or I would be against it, plain and clear.
We couldn't agree more with you, Joe. I think you're underestimating the board here. We agree with you.
So, that's, okay.
And Tom, you get our message. Go through the interviews.
Also, that in this, in the budget year coming up, we currently don't have that money to offer someone. So, it would also help to have money to hire somebody.
We may have to change that down the road.
In order to hire somebody for that position.
Well, then, if we think we got the right guy, we can do that. We can add more money to that account. You don't have to do it for a while.
Well, you couldn't do it till, you know, July first. And then we gotta wait for free cash to get certified to use free cash to do it and have a town meeting, unless...
It's for us a reserve fund.
From a reserve fund, but that's a finance.
If this board thinks the interview should go through as planned, I disagree with that, because if we're going to increase the skill set required, you have a false interview. That's my point. If the board does not think we need to adjust the essential duties and functions of this position and move forward as it is, as it will be presented to the candidates, then that's fair. But if we're gonna change the job duties of this candidate, if they become the candidate of choice, that's unfair.
Well, what I'm saying is we would do that for the following fiscal year.
No, I mean, you shouldn't even, you shouldn't change a job. You should have the job duties as it's going to be known for quite some time.
I think we're interfering too much into town manager's job. That's my view on it. I just think it's too much down here.
I thought we agreed to let Tom go ahead with the interview.
I know you wanna be strategic in how you approach this role, but he's in the middle of a process of hiring. Why would we stop that?
Because it's our job to look at this and ask the question, Dan, which is the question I proposed last meeting.
Maybe it's our job.
It is our job to review that and make sure the right thing for the town.
The board is reading tentatively to let him go ahead with the interviews, either to tomorrow or in the next couple of weeks, and make a judgment. Is there a candidate here that could meet enhanced or revised job description?
How many interviews have we had so far?
Three.
Okay, any offers?
One.
Accept or reject?
Well, it was rejected earlier. We're gonna be here tonight.
It's rejected. What was the offer? What was the offer?
The monetary?
Yeah.
The full amount that we budgeted for next year?
Twenty-six fourteen an hour.
Which includes, and then overtime comes along, of course.
But the twenty-six fourteen an hour, did they counter?
I'm sorry?
Did they have a counter offer?
I've been back and forth with the person who we talked about, and he was the person who said you might be able to get what you were looking for for the mid-sixties.
Mid-sixties, which is what, an hour thirty?
Thirty, yeah.
Okay. Was that, if we were to adjust the salary, would that candidate have been, would they have accepted the offer or would they have been a good quality candidate?
I think they would have been a good quality candidate. I think they would have, they, I think it's a very good possibility they would have accepted the offer. I think it might be a possibility that they would, you know, if we could change next year's budget, that they would...
If you were to look at that candidate and the two, all you're just looking at resumes, you have interviews scheduled tomorrow, which of the three would you prefer?
I think the candidate we offered it to.
So, would you like this board to consider readjusting that salary to make a new offer to that candidate if they're better qualified? This is where I'm going, Dan. This is meddling, but it's the right move.
I'm not sure the board can adjust the salary because the budget for fiscal year twenty-four has been set.
Okay.
That's what I was getting at before.
But it would be understanding that, yeah, we don't have the power to snap our fingers and change it, but we indicate there are certain hoops we have to go through to raise the salary, which doesn't seem to be a big problem. We get it for, we hired Bud Hall. We made all kinds of concessions and additions and changes just so we could get him. And I think this would probably be, should be, I don't know.
Not to call it any further, but good candidate based on the job description we have in front of us or obviously you can see the new one going forward?
The proposed one.
Give me a new job description and I think we could have another conversation, too. It's difficult to have a fictitious, even though you're expressing what you want, maybe what you might wanna see in it, I still don't know what it looks like exactly.
Okay.
Tough to compare.
Can we go through these two interviews tomorrow? And then, Tom, can you confer with the chairman of the select board? Tell them what you think of the candidate, candidate number one, the initial one, and that would be the best one? And then we can work towards securing the appropriate monies to pay this gentleman. I assume it's this gentleman.
I'd very much like to go through with the two interviews tomorrow and see whether or not we have somebody that we think we can make an offer to.
Joe, you think you can, you know, be with Tom over the next weekend or so?
No, I'd like to either have a vote to revise the job description or back away from that and let the town manager make his own decision, because I would disagree with it. Because I think we need to look at, I believe we need to look at the skill sets for the long-term needs of this town and also retention. We hire a less experienced person, the likelihood of them moving on is higher for their own personal job growth. So, I think we introduce risk if we have a lower skill set in the job description at twenty-six fourteen. But that's just my opinion, but...
If you want, if we're gonna make a decision, if we can't come to a compromise here, then let's have a vote right now. Make your motion again, we'll vote on it.
Okay, I'll move that. We pause the interviews until we see a revised job description on the next select board meeting and then move forward from there.
I'll second for discussion.
Motion second and pro discussion? Okay, here none, all in favor? Aye?
No.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Moving forward with the job description, the candidates that are in the pool. Thank you for that discussion. Signed letter supporting statewide single-use retail plastic ban.
This is something the board discussed earlier. I've got a template letter that I put into form for this board and that's what you have before you.
Tom, just for informational purposes, when we discussed it before, do we have a position?
Yes, the board supported this.
Board voted support?
The town meeting has already voted for the town. There's already a bylaw in town.
Okay, so all we need to do is sign it. Thank you.
Select board's summer schedule.
Any motion required on this?
Well, the difference is that the town's current policy applies only to the town and this is for a statewide.
All right, so I think we need a motion, then. If the select board wants to support this, right?
We make the motion.
Here, can I have the letter, man? I just need to look at the top of that. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we send a letter to, where are we sending this letter to? The Honorable Rebecca Rausch, Honorable James B. Eldrich, the Joint Committee for Environmental Natural Resources, and Honorable Daniel Cahill and Honorable Dylan A. Fernandez regarding a statewide, single-use retail plastic ban and our support for that.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Okay, motion second and discussion. Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Select board's summer schedule? Oh, wait a minute, that's number thirteen. That's next, Tom. Okay, any preferred summer schedule? I'll recommend we skip July and August. Is there a second? I think we covered July and August in the last couple of meetings, so I think we're good.
Is that your fatigue showing, or?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm sorry.
It's all good.
Is there September in there?
No, it's September, you gotta come back, Mark.
What do we usually do, one meeting per month?
It's usually the second Monday in July and August, as I recall.
I think it went down to the tenth.
I think there may have been an interim meeting last year.
Yeah, we had a couple extra meetings.
Oh, yeah, probably.
I think, traditionally, the select board has put this time beside, aside in the first two weeks of July, so the staff can take their vacations because of the downtime, so to speak. I think the more we get the meeting date towards the center of the month, namely the seventeenth, it would be better. On the tenth, if someone might be planning a two-week vacation, that would be impossible under these circumstances.
Wow, two weeks. That's extraordinary.
Yeah.
Actually, for the financial staff, the first two weeks in July are pretty busy. But, thank you.
Yeah, but yourself in a listen. That was what we based it.
So, what's the proposal?
My proposal is do the seventeenth and I think, what, fifteenth of August? The second Monday? And you get all the jobs.
I have a calendar on my phone, yes.
So, the third Monday of each month?
Well, see what the fifteenth of August is.
That would be a Tuesday.
So, the fourteenth of August.
Fourteenth is the second Monday. That would be normal, anyway.
Yep, fourteenth of August, seventeenth of July. It's the suggestion.
Yeah, so one meeting per month as per usual for summer schedule?
That brings them a little closer together, too, which is probably good.
July seventeenth and August fourteenth, is that what we're talking about?
Yep, that's what I proposed.
Okay. That was a motion, huh?
Yeah, it was a motion. Five seconds.
I am available. Any other comments? Joe, you said you were gonna be out of town?
Yeah, I think about it, Tom. March, July seventeenth and August fourteenth?
I'll be out of town on July seventeenth. But I might zoom in on the balcony in early.
No, can avoid that if possible. Any other conflicts on the seventeenth while we're in discussion? Bob, you around?
Yep, I'll be here.
Joe, you're gonna be out?
I'll figure it out.
Got it. Well, as long as we have a quorum, that's all I wanna make sure, as long as we got three. We have a quorum, we're gonna be all right. Fourteenth, sounds good.
So, everybody gets, everything is fourteen?
So, we're gonna vote on that, or?
No, just, well, there's a motion you've voted for.
I guess it was, yeah, a motion. I have seconds.
All in favor for those dates?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Did I get a chance to read the interim report on citizens' energy discount electricity proposals?
Yeah, actually, we made quite a bit of progress. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read this yet. I can, perhaps I should read it through?
No.
No?
Everybody should read it.
Got it, good.
I get your recommendations not to go forward.
Yes, that's the salary.
Yeah, so my recommendation is not to accept their, the offer that they made. And I just included a little more information on where we are with the pilot. and potential for future development.
Okay, so basically, um, we're already in agreement with Rockwood for ten years, that is seventeen point five percent discount. There is no limit of where citizens can bring the low energy or low cost savings. They can go outside of this area if they so wish, there's no state regulations, it doesn't sound like they would put anything to the contract. And then the last one is finally Richard Hall's kind of discovered that the current line capacity here is not sufficient for a major solar installation, so this project is dead. Right?
Right.
Okay.
It's a two hundred kilowatts.
Yeah. I'm glad we did the analysis.
Thank you, Richard Hall.
Yes, Richard, thank you.
And thank you to the select board who suggested we do the assessment. Okay, motion to, to decline the proposal from Citizens Energy? Is there a second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, that's it, um, town manager update?
I attended a regular bi-weekly construction meeting for the town hall renovation. John Berry, our architect, is putting together a punch list for Cape Cod builders who have completed the major work with touch-ups and cleanup remaining. One unexpected problem was additional work to be done as a result of the asbestos remediation workers pulling some of the paint off the walls when they pulled their tape off. That, that is being addressed at this time.
No additional costs to the town, Tom?
Oh, it's not going to cost us any.
Okay.
Uh, the framework for the ceiling tiles is mostly are all installed, and the tiles are expected to go up very soon. Then the insulation can be blown in, along with the final electrical and alarm work being done. Uh, there's no final date, but we're moving towards substantial completion fairly close to the expected timeline. A lot depends on getting the punch list items completed. We opened the bids for the town hall data wiring project and attentively awarded the bid to CBS Unlimited from Bennington, New Hampshire pending reference checks. Their bid was thirty-six thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents. We received two other bids, one for forty-three thousand dollars, two hundred, forty-three thousand, two hundred five dollars and ten cents, and the other for fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. On June seventh, I published bids for the electric vehicle charging project, those are due June, uh, June twenty-eighth. Uh, and as a reminder, the bids for the Barton property are due Tuesday, June twentieth.
Tom, how many people have put in for that so far? Have you received any bids on it?
I have not received any inquiries or bids.
Okay.
I wouldn't expect to receive bids until close to the deadline.
Okay.
That's at four o'clock.
I believe so.
In your office?
Yes.
Tuesday, great.
Uh, the fibering project is proceeding well, the wires have been strung and they're getting brought into the buildings where our IT consultant will take over and get them on to our servers. The Dalton Division Road Sewer Engineering Project is progressing a bit slower than originally planned, but it's not at this point in danger of falling too far behind. Uh, the consultants are focusing more on, on the, the main part of the division road engineering at this point. Uh, our concern is, uh, our concern, the town's concern about the timeline of that project was mainly about how much the town should borrow for, for next year, and we've, we've resolved that with the consultants. Uh, and speaking of borrowing, the bids came in for our annual borrowing at four point three seven percent, really quite good for these times, and that was East Hampton Safin's van. And continuing to work with Citizens Energy on their requested easement, their proposal is in KP Law's hands.
Which we can now cancel.
I'm sorry?
Which we can now cancel. We can cancel that work.
No, the easement proposal's different.
For Citizens Energy?
No, the project will be moving ahead.
Wait, wait.
Our power purchase agreement, or?
We're, we're just not going to participate in their offer. Because it's too little, and it's not advantageous for town.
So what's the value to the town?
We have the taxes, back taxes, and then we have the past due for however many years. Plus, it's the current tax that's being paid.
But, but the initial, okay.
Use of land, that was otherwise.
My motion was to kill the project, it was not to, it was to kill the whole project, that was a motion.
No, no, it's a, it's a private project.
We misunderstood, it's already been approved.
It's a private project.
There's no select board.
For the town project.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, okay.
Okay, yeah.
I, and also, Joe, I believe we will receive a sum of money to be determined for the easement.
Uh, well, the easement, again, is in the lawyer's hands.
Traditionally, when you give somebody an easement, you get paid for it, that's all.
The money, the substantial money we'll be getting will be for the pilot.
Do the tax pay off on the pilot, pilot money?
Yeah.
All right, I misunderstood, I'm fine, thank you, thanks, man.
Uh, finally, I've been working with Terry Williams and Bud on a replacement for the elm tree that Williams donated to the senior center by the commemorative plaque that's there. The tree was damaged in the storm and the Williams have offered to replace it.
That's nice.
Great.
Oh, good news at the end there.
There's some good news in here, don't underestimate, don't underestimate the good news, it's there.
And that's it.
Okay, any future agenda moves?
I'll keep it light for the rest of the time.
I anticipate forty, I anticipate forty hours before the meeting. I, as my email indicated, I attended the, um, I'm sorry, I'm probably on the remarks for the select board, sorry. This might be under the forty hours, too. I attended the, um, fire district meeting tonight, which was posted, and it was posted for general business. Um, when I arrived about ten minutes early, I walked in and the chairman said that they were in executive session, but they had the full fire department there. And there was no executive session on the agenda. Concerning, to say the least. Um, but I did ask Mr. Driscoll to get some communication out, because residents are asking about what's going on with the fire department, the safe, you know, fire safety, et cetera, and to possibly share that with, through a press release or through some other communication channels, so we all know what's going on. Because what happened is that what the residents know through press is that our fire chief was terminated. Um, and now what they don't know is that there was an interim, but then the interim stepped out. So there's currently no fire chief. So they're talking about having another interim from outside come in, but that's not final yet, and that may occur, I believe. I think there's something on the agenda for tomorrow. They're very concerned that they're, they did not have an open meeting tonight, so, so I have no idea what the hell's going on with it.
Is that meeting for tomorrow posted?
It's posted, yeah.
There's one tonight, there's one tomorrow?
Yeah.
What if there isn't one tomorrow?
They're, they're now posted on the, um, on the Dalton calendar, Dalton Town calendar. I, I don't want to misdate this, um, Sabrina, oh, here it is. Yeah, one for tomorrow. May June thirteenth is at three o'clock. Stationery factory. And the minutes are general business, and then movement to an executive session, consider interview applicants for employment or appointment by preliminary screening.
So basically, this is an executive session.
Basically.
Uh-huh, all right, thank you.
Any other remarks with the select board? Okay, here are none. Uh, announcements, annual car permits, bag stickers or encyclo only car permits are available for purchase at the transfer station on the town's website. The town of Dalton currently has the following job opportunity, superintendent building and grounds. Interested, please visit the town website or call the town manager's office for more information. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies, please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. On Saturday, July fifteenth, the Dalton Cultural Council will be holding Dalton Day from one P M. to five P M. On the front lawn of the senior center to celebrate our community and culture, including live music, entertainment, food, art, and much more. Please see the town website for more information and updates. Is your electricity bill too high? The town has contracted Colonial Power to provide electricity plan for town residents. It takes advantage of joining with other communities to have a larger customer base for negotiations, which has resulted in prices significantly lower than current ever sourced prices. Please note, this may not always be the case, for more details, what to opt in or opt out, visit the town's website or call the town manager's office. Dalton Housing Authority is seeking volunteers to fill two vacancies on its board, must be resident Dalton. Please call four one three six eight four fourteen seventy for more information. Next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, June twenty-sixth. Is that correct? Yeah. At seven o'clock at the senior center with an option for remote participation. And with that, I have a motion to adjourn.
Uh, before we do that, I'm not going to be in town for the next meeting.
Okay.
Just wanted to let you know.
And just, unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town the weekend of the July fifteenth as well.
All right, well, we're on that meeting.
Let's do this Dalton Day thing.
Oh, the Dalton Day, yeah.
Uh, so motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned, good night Dalton, thank you.